Commissioner Young?
I've got questions on the staff report itself. And then I've got additional questions on the balance of the EIR. And so what I want to do is first talk about the staff report and things that are in the staff report, ask questions about that, and then come back to some of the other issues that may not have been addressed directly by the staff report, but is within these volumes. In the executive summary, it says that crude oil transported by rail cars is expected to be of similar quality compared to the existing crude oil imported by tankers. Now, two of the crudes that are expected to be shipped by rail are tar sands oil, which is a heavy sour crude, and Bakken shale oil, which is a very light oil with high ends, which is often described as having the consistency of gasoline. How are these crudes of similar quality to the oil currently being imported by tanker?
So you may remember, I apologize, I don't remember the meeting. It was either a comment on the, part of the public comments process on the draft EIR, revised draft EIR. These guys have great memories, I'm sure they can correct me at any time. But I remember that the Vice President of Valero was at that meeting, and he had confirmed at that time that the Viral refinery did currently process Bakken crude, that it came in by marine vessel. So the part of the analysis that went into what kind of crude, I mean, that played into it, but we also, there was assays that were submitted, confidential business information. But we have enough information to know that what the, that the Valero refinery is processing that crude now, and that they will also be, you know, if they were to have this project, they could also bring it in by rail.
And under the section on emergency access and response, it talks about an agreement between the Benicia Fire Department and the Valero Fire Department to implement an operational aid agreement as a mitigation measure. But then it says, quote, "Due to preemption, the city has no ability to require such a mitigated mitigation measure since the impact to be mitigated relates to rail operation." So how is a mutual aid response to an incident on Valero property, or the provision of an EMT response by Valero Fire in the event of a train blocking access to regular first responders, how is that impacted or nullified by preemption?
Simply put, because Valero agreed to those requirements. And the requirements can therefore be enforced as a matter of contract law. And in fact, the city has the authority, has the ability under the agreement to go in and get an injunctive injunction against Valero proceeding if, for example, Valero were to stop or threaten to stop using 1232 tank cars. But the reason that it's enforceable is simply because it's a matter of contract, Valero has agreed to it, and the city does not need any regulatory authority to enforce it, and that's because the regulatory authority would be preempted.
So what are the consequences? The only consequence, as I understand it, is that the city would have to sue. There's no fines involved for not using a 1232 car, for example.
That's right.
So the city would have to sue to enforce the terms of the agreement. But the agreement doesn't call for any legal fees to be covered in the event that the city has to sue. And as I understand it, it's pretty typical that in agreement with a outside party and the city, the city would have a clause that says their legal fees would be paid in the event they prevail.
I don't remember whether it is or is not. I'll take your word for it that it's not, and I really can't answer that question.
On page 15, under goal 2.7, it says, "A project will allow the refinery access to additional North American source crudes." But that's not the only way. This project isn't the only way those crudes can be accessed. The report by Dr. Jim McGovern, who was hired, I guess, by the city to write a report on the economic benefits of the project, this was dated two weeks ago, said, "The California refineries, quote, 'receive additional North American crude that has been shipped by rail to ports in Washington State and loaded onto tankers for shipment to California refineries.'" So presumably, there's already a way for Valero to get this oil that they would like to refine. Quote, "Valero is a publicly owned corporation with a fiduciary responsibility to its shareholders. If the Benicia refinery is no longer profitable, Valero can no longer justify operating it." Now, that's a pretty ominous warning, and it's consistent with rumors in the community that if Valero does not get this permit, they might close the refinery. On Jan., on January 21st, 2016, the LA Times Business Section had a report with the headline, "Valero's Second Quarter Profit Soars." And the article stated that the two California refineries operated by Valero saw their operating income increase from $24 million in the second quarter of 2014 to $295 million in the second quarter of 2015. And that's without any crude being delivered by rail. So of course, Valero's free to do what they want with their own property, and if they choose to close the refinery, it won't be because it's not profitable. Under goal 2.2, it talks about traffic, and it says that the general plan states that the level of service D has been adopted as the standard for intersection operation, and that the project would not degrade any intersection to a level worse than level of service D. So for people who don't know, level of service is what traffic engineers mean by the length of a delay at an intersection. And level of service D means a long traffic delay from between 25 to 35 seconds at an intersection. And level of service F is defined as an extreme traffic delay with intersection capacity exceeded and delays of more than 50 seconds. So the staff report says a project won't degrade any section to a level worse than level of service D. So going to the traffic study itself, which is page 1,293 of the draft EIR, somewhere in this stack, but it's there, it says, quote, "During times of the day when traffic volume is low, it's possible for an at-grade train crossing to result in average delays in the level of service F range, with resulting vehicle queues accommodated within the storage capacity provided at the intersection." Table 2.5 of the traffic study shows that five intersections would degrade from level of service A to level of service F at the times of the train crossings. On page 1307, it says that if there are no train crossings at intersections, the traffic was acceptable. But if there were train crossings of more than five minutes, level of service would degrade to F. So how do you justify the statement that the project will not degrade any intersection to a level worse than D?
My name is Jack Hutchison. I'm Senior Transportation Engineer with ESA. Regarding the statement about the not degrading intersection to a level service D, in the EIR, our focus was on the Park Road crossing. At that location where our analysis had shown that, under baseline conditions, whenever there's a train crossing, it's at level of service F because of the prevailing length ranging from, there were some really short, 30 seconds, up to 16 minutes of delays. And so our position in the EIR was that because on the baseline, level of service F conditions are now occurring whenever there's a rail crossing, rail crossings under this project, the four times a day, two loaded, two empties leaving, would not cause the level of service F. It would be, it would be a similar level of service F condition during those times. But that because of the three and a half, three and a half, three and a third minutes of delay, the other 51 minutes, almost 52 minutes, there would be zero delay. Hence, the conclusion was level of service F, but that the average delay over the course of an hour, which is standard traffic planning practice, that increase would be no more than one second, and that would not exceed a threshold of significance.
The rail crossings for this project will be eight and a half minutes.
Correct.
So eight and a half minutes will certainly cause a level of service F, will it not?
Right. But it already, five minutes, 16 minutes, during the crossings, it already is at level of service F. This will increase the number potentially that would happen, but it would not increase the severity of that level of service F condition, and it's on that basis.
But we're sticking with the statement that no intersection will be worse than level of service D. That's what the staff report says.
Right. During rail crossings, there would not be any situations where it goes from better than D to worse than D. Because when there's a crossing now, it's worse than D, and with the project, it would be worse than D.
On the issue of greenhouse gases, page 18 of the staff report says, "The project would result in a net decrease of air pollutants and greenhouse gas emissions in the Bay Area." But the Air District's letter of October 28th says, "The project would admit 13,609 tons of greenhouse gases," which make them cumulatively considerable. Now, table 4.1.5 of the draft EIR is net operational exhaust emissions within the Bay Area basin. And it calculates the emissions from ships traveling from the buoy west of the Golden Gate Bridge to Benicia. And it then deducts the emissions expected in Benicia from the use of diesel locomotives delivering oil by rail from those larger emissions covering the entire Bay Area, and makes the finding that this constitutes a less than significant impact. My question is, when you're calculating the locomotive emissions for the Bay Area, what part of the Bay Area are you using?
I'm Tim Rimpo with ESA. And in regard to your question about locomotive emissions, it's the train travel from the refinery to the edge of the basin, or to the edge of the San Francisco Bay Area air basin, which is Solano County.
Right, Vacaville, essentially.
Essentially, yeah.
So basically, what you're saying is you're calculating locomotive emissions from Benicia to Vacaville, and you're comparing that against tankers coming in from the Golden, outside the Golden Gate Bridge, spread out over the entire Bay Area. Is that right?
That's correct.
Objective 1C4 of the Climate Action Plan, and this is all from the staff report, is to encourage Valero to continue to reduce emissions. And without mentioning the Air District's estimate of more than 13,000 tons of emissions, the staff report says that the project would not directly conflict with the city's established strategies since GHG emissions would be reduced in the whole Bay Area, as we just talked about. So I think what the city is saying is that even though our Climate Action Plan encourages them to reduce emissions, and they're going to increase it by 13,000 tons, it doesn't really conflict with our own established strategies. Mitigation Measure 4.1-1, page 22 of the staff report, says, and it's a mitigation measure, says that Valero or its contractors will comply with applicable air district control measures for emissions during construction. My question is, when did compliance with existing laws and regulations become a mitigation measure?
So that's a standard mitigation measure for any project.
But it's required by the law anyway.
And I understand what you're saying. It's something that is a standard mitigation project for any, for any project that we would include as a mitigation project, whether it was Valero or whether it was something else.
On page 33, it describes a finding rejecting the no-project alternative as infeasible because, quote, "It would not allow the refinery to meet most of its, of the project objectives." My question is, when did it become the city's responsibility to help the applicant meet their objectives? The staff report says, "We can't, we can't do the no-project alternative because it wouldn't meet the project objectives." But I think our obligation as a planning commission isn't just to meet the objectives of the applicant. It goes beyond that.
The purview of the, of the commission is to require alternatives that avoid significant impacts. So that's really, that's really the key. And there, there are no alternatives here that would avoid any significant impact. Now, it also, there's also the finding here that the no-project alternative would be, would not be feasible as compared with the project objectives. But as far as the purview of the city, the planning commission, the role of alternatives analysis is for the planning commission to identify alternatives that would avoid significant impacts. And the alternatives here will not do that, except to the extent that we're talking about rail impacts. And so the city would be precluded by the ICCTA from requiring those alternatives.
The draft statement of overriding considerations attached to this report, as Exhibit A1, finds that the project benefits do not outweigh the project's impacts, but that it is legally unfeasible due to preemption to mitigate the impacts of the project. The issue of preemption is obviously critical to this whole discussion, and there's going to be a lot more testimony about preemption, and I've got more questions about it that we'll get to shortly, I hope. On the economic impacts itself of the project, there is a report in the draft, in the staff report, an attachment from Andrew Chang Company. Is Mr. Chang here, or someone from his company here?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, hopefully, somebody can answer these questions. The report says that Valero pays over $3 million a year in property taxes to the city. That number has been significantly reduced by two previously successful appeals to the county assessor of their property valuation. Is that correct? Anybody?
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
I think that if we're going to go through the project impacts based on a report that was prepared by Valero, should probably direct those to the applicant, you can choose to hold on to those questions until after the applicant gives a presentation, or we can ask the applicant to come up now, but either way.
No, let's hold those, let's hold those questions for the applicant.
Okay. Is that number five in the statement of overriding considerations says, "The project will, quote, 'reduce the likelihood of an oil spill compared to the risk of a maritime spill under current conditions.'" Well, we've heard a lot about oil spills due to derailments. Can anybody give me examples of oil spills from a maritime tanker to back up that statement?
So the numbers related to the decrease in greenhouse gas emissions call for a very specific scenario. The same amount of crude coming in replacing what's currently coming in on ship. If Valero wanted to change their business practices and say, start shipping crude to other countries now that the crude export ban has been lifted, would the city of Benicia have to approve that? Do we have, do we monitor their business practices after this is approved?
You're asking whether or not we would have discretion over their marine operation?
Mm-hmm.
The city of Benicia, no.
Okay. If Valero deviates from the practices that, if they outline in the EIR, such as using the safer 1232 rail cars, how, how would we know? Is there monitoring or enforcement of, of what's outlined in the EIR?
Yes, conditions are, like that are part of the mitigation monitoring reporting plan that are, would be required as a condition of project approval.
Okay, so, and if they, say, break some of the agreement, would there be punitive actions involved at that point?
Enforcement is discretionary, but it would be up to the city to enforce those promises and those agreements.
The economic studies that are in the, in the staff report, so there's a fear here in the community that the approval of this process or this project would affect real estate values. And there are, a recent mailer by Valero says that they, quote, states that "The refinery supports Benicia's recent higher median home value by providing quality jobs and significant funding for improved services and facilities." However, a survey, a survey performed by the University of Pittsburgh, the one in Pennsylvania, not anybody local, found that undesirable facilities or incidents reduce property values in their vicinity. Valero recently was listed as number three on the state's top polluter, top G greenhouse gas emission polluter by data out of the California Air Resources Board. So I think it's safe to say that that, it's, it's one of these type of facilities that strikes fear. The University of Pacific, or University of Pittsburgh report goes on to say that housing markets are sensitive to the real or perceived risks associated with adverse risks. So just the fact that there could be a crude-by-rail accident or explosion, like those that have happened in other communities, could affect our property values. My question to staff and the team of consultants is, if this project is approved, what can be done to ensure that our property values will be inoculated by the perceived risks?
And I don't have an answer to that question.
Letter that we received on February 8th today from the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, and we actually used their zones and their information for the EIR. But in this letter, today's letter, it states, "After review of the final EIR, Bay Area Air District staff remain concerned that the cumulative air quality impact and health risk analysis provided in the final EIR do not accurately characterize the potential air pollution emissions or health impacts associated with this project. The analysis relies in part on an outdated health risk assessment from the 2002 Valero Improvement Project Draft EIR, and it underestimates the number of remaining ship calls to the refineries. It also uses unreasonable locomotive fuel efficiency estimates and omits some sources of emissions." It goes on to say that it does not evaluate the potential health impacts from the particulate matter 2.5 emissions. Can someone address these concerns?
And what was frustrating about the letter is they didn't provide any specifics on now follow-up as to what specifically they felt was wrong. It was kind of a general.
I think I have a question on traffic. I'm not sure if you can answer my question or not. One of my phone calls to one of the agencies did not get returned. And my question had to do with the 680 off-ramps. I was driving 680 not too long ago, and I could already see the one off-ramp already backed up almost to the freeway as it was with the kind of traffic we're having right now. If it becomes more of a problem under a project like this, and that's an area, if you're going northbound on 680, that's right where the concrete starts to restrict down and it heads onto the causeway section of the freeway, how would Caltrans approach resolving that problem?
Dr. Sin again. It's hard to answer what Caltrans would do, but my educated opinion would be that because there is an existing changeable message, electronic changeable message sign on the side of the freeway as you're approaching the off-ramp, similar to what they do for on US 101 in the Blythdale Avenue exit up in Mill Valley, they would, they would flash a sign when there is something activated, where there's a backup on the ramp, then it will warn the drivers, say, you know, "Warning, watch for stop traffic ahead." It's basically what we're talking about, is a safety concern in terms of if people do not expect that there's going to be a backup further back than usual, will they proceed at the same speeds that they normally would, and then therefore, could they have an, a rare an accident? That's the only thing I can think of, is just forewarning those occasions, because while clearly, I don't live here, and so I don't, can't speak to every day what happens, the length of the off-ramp plus the extended auxiliary lane, the extra lane that connects 780 to 680 before you're, if you're going to continue on 680, you have to merge left, it's like, you know, 3,000 feet in length.
This is, this is from a letter from Caltrans of January 15th of this year. "It is the opinion of Caltrans that queues would back up onto the main line of northbound 680 at Bay Shore Road. We find, we find these impacts to be significant because the fourfold increase in frequency of queuing is anticipated to impede traffic while reducing the deceleration space for travelers as they approach the Bay Shore Road off-ramp. This issue must be evaluated in your traffic impact analysis to ensure sufficient mitigation of any adverse effects of the 680 Bay Shore off-ramp. But as far as I can see, there is no mitigation at all."
The problem in my mind is, once this train goes by that, the access road to these businesses, and I think there's a trade union out there, there's no access. They are locked out.
I have a question for the legal people here. My question is about preemption, and when staff gave their report earlier this evening, they said the Sequo review of their refinery operations is not preempted. And it was, it was very clearly presented that the unloading rack is on Valero property. There's another bullet in the staff presentation that I didn't hear a mention of, but I just wanted to kind of draw out a little more on why this bullet's there and what, what the point was that was supposed to have been made, or maybe just to ask for an expansion on it. The point says, "Valero is not acting as an agent of Union Pacific." But I didn't hear the staff presentation on that. I may have been not listening. It's, it's in the slideshow that we saw this evening, so that's why I'm asking.
There are, the conclusion that SEQUAD does apply to the onsite operations, construction operation of the loading rack, is based on some of the federal cases that have decided the preemption issue for projects that were owned and operated by a private party other than the railroad. And the rule that has come out of those cases is that local zoning and local permitting process will apply to a transloading facility or other ancillary railroad facility as long as it is not owned or operated by the railroad, and as long as the private party that owns and operates it is not doing so pursuant to a contractual arrangement with Union Pacific.
So where do you draw the line on preemption? Since obviously there is a, if this project were to happen, there would be a contractual relationship between Valero and Union Pacific. It seems like preemption, preemption, preemption. I mean, it's, it's kind of like, it's, it's a, it's a difficult concept to grasp as a planning commissioner, you know, look at this, but don't look at this, look at this, sorry, but don't look at this. So the line, where do you draw that line in the sand on what is preempted? And how do you explain that at this point in time going forward?
The, the line we draw here is where the crude oil is unloaded from the train in the, in the unloading rack. The ICCTA was designed to prevent a patchwork of local regulations that would make it difficult for railroads to do their job and, and to make money and to do their business and to serve people's needs. And so basically, what it says, "The Surface Transportation Board gives permission to the railroads and other aspects of the railroad's operations are regulated by the US Department of Transportation." And, and so when it comes to rail operations, very broadly construed, rail operations meaning trains, tracks, all different types of tracks, ancillary facilities, warehouses, piers, docks, to the extent that they're owned, operated, or managed by a railroad, comes within the scope of that very broad exclusive jurisdiction.
Following that logic, then, I guess my question goes back to, all this preemption really begs the question of who and how the railroad is regulated. We have a project here with environmental impacts, and we have a railroad that's preempted because of vulcanization. I understand that. But we have an environmental consequence, many environment, 11 environmental consequences of this project. So, you know, as a, just a citizen of the United States, and the state of California, and the city of Benicia, I don't understand how I am being protected from the behavior of the railroad, which is a business.
The FEIR, the final EIR, now acknowledges that the no-project alternative is both legally feasible and environmentally superior, and states that decision-makers will be limited to deciding between the project and the no-project alternatives, and that it's basically, it's a take-or-to-leave-it situation. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Are we saying that the planning commission can't propose any mitigations, including mitigations to protect the health and safety of the public, because it would interfere with railroad operations, and we can't do that?
Essentially, yes, although I'll restate it. Test isn't whether it interferes with railroad operations. The test, as I've said, is whether the city is going to The test, as I've said, is whether the city is going to attempt to impose a preclearance or pre-construction requirement with conditions that have the effect of managing or governing rail operations in order to mitigate a rail-related impact.
Is he pretty sure on this issue of indirect preemption? But there are lots of other attorneys who are taking the exact opposite position. For example, the Air District. They said that the ICCTA does not prevent the city from requiring an applicant for a discretionary project like Valero from mitigating significant air quality impacts just because the emissions come from railroad operation. Quote, "Requiring the applicant to implement an off-site mitigation program to reduce air quality impacts would not be in violation of preemption because a mitigation requirement would not require the applicant to achieve the emission reductions from the railroad." "Requiring the applicant to offset the project's emissions through an off-site mitigation program is well within the discretion of the city." Sequo requires the city to look at all feasible mitigation measures that could be implemented by the applicant. The incorrect, quote, "The incorrect assertion that preemption legally prohibits the city from imposing off-site mitigation program on Valero does not provide the substantial evidence required for a lead agency to approve a project with significant impacts or support any findings of infeasibility as required by Sequo." That's according to the Air District. Now, UP officials, there were a lot of comments from all the government agencies in the Sacramento area through which these trains would pass. And they're represented by an organization called SECOG, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments. So UP and their attorneys went and met with SECOG, and they followed up with a letter from their attorney with the opinion that Valero could not be made to mitigate any of the impacts like we're talking about. But SECOG responded, and they were not convinced. They quoted the Attorney General saying that the ICCTA does not preempt a state law to pay for pedestrian overpasses. The first has to do with the accident study in the EIR. And it was done by Dr. Barkin, and I assume he's not here. Is that safe to say?
I'm seeing Nazis not here.
Dr. Barkin is not here, but we do have a representative from MRS who took that report and then did the risk analysis.
So the, so the accident study, Dr. Barkin works, had previously worked for the Association of American Railroads for about a decade. And now he leads a group at the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana, which studies railroads. And that institute receives a lot of money from the Association of American Railroads as well, and he still works for the Association of American Railroads. So the study may have some questions about its total impartiality. Nevertheless, he said, his, his study looked at freight derailments for all freight railroads between 2005 and 2009, although crude oil shipments have increased by 6,000% after 2007. And the analysis didn't really focus on crude by rail. It looked at all freight accidents. One of the interesting things in his study was talking about the track conditions. And class one track is the worst and class five track is the best. And he said there was a mile and a half of class one track between Roseville and Benicia. And that class one track has a 15 times greater risk of derailment than a class five track. So my question is where is this class one track? And he said there was a one-time chance in 111 years, and that therefore, the risk was less than significant. According to the analysis from NRDC that said basically even if Dr. Barkin is right in his probability of an accident and a derailment, that means there's an 11% chance of a derailment over the next 30 years. Quote, "Because the significance of an accident depends on both its probability and the magnitude of the risk, large oil spills are significant impacts under Sequo and must be mitigated." The NRDC letter then quotes Section 15143 of Sequo, quote, "The significant effects should be discussed with emphasis in proportion to their severity and probability of occurrence." And I'm not sure that the report meets that particular standard. The study says they could go up to 50 miles an hour. And we know that the chances of accidents increase with speed. Isn't that correct?
To a certain extent, yes.
So I guess my question is why wasn't the study done assuming a 50 mile per hour speed instead of a 26 mile per hour speed?
I think there's some confusion in the Barkin study because he listed train speed as a function of what class the rail is. So we looked at train speeds in excess of 50 miles per hour. But it's on class five track is a higher speed than, for example, class three or class one.
There's a letter from Butte County and the city of Biggs about the Feather River Canyon Route. And 93 miles of that route has been designated by the PUC as a local safety hazard site because of steep grades and tight curves. And the city and the county both caution that there's limited firefighting capability along that route. The final EIR also states that a portion of the Feather Canyon Route has not been fully upgraded to allow the use of positive train controls. But we assume that UP could be using that route as well, correct?
I believe there's some delays in the implementation of positive train control. There have been a few, I guess, issues. UP probably should speak to the issue. So I don't know when that will actually occur.
But it would happen after the implementation of the project, presumably.
It's possible, correct.
So there was an accident along the Feather River recently, November 2014, that a train derailed and it spilled corn into the Feather River. The Plumas County Grand Jury actually investigated that accident, and they found that it took about five hours for UP to have containment booms in place. According to the Plumas County officials, UP told them that they do not have any spill containment kits in Plumas County. They, the grand jury asked UP where their containment kits were, and they said, well, there were some in Chico and some in Roseville and some in Reno. But those were the closest ones they had to the Feather River.
We would use foam application to control a fire involving crude oil.
And how much foam does the department have?
The department apparatus is all equipped with a 30-gallon concentrate. I would have to do a significant mathematical problem for you to tell you what that equates to based on the percentage of mixture with water, as to how long we would apply that amount of foam. The, the concept is, is you, you protect the threat until such time as you have adequate foam on hand to sustain the application of the necessary foam product to control the fire.
So basically, you just, you don't try to fight the fire until you got the foam?
Correct.
You let it burn?
You, you control the, the threat, the exposure issues, until you have adequate foam resources and application process to apply enough foam to control the fire.
Get to your point on foam. We have 23,000 gallons of foam inside the refinery right now. So we are, if, if foam is needed, we have a sufficient amount of foam. Smaller area, but I think 23,000 should be able to handle one rail car.
One rail car. Did you look at emissions from fires burning themselves out? From just letting a fire go involving thousands of gallons of oil burning until it was gone?
Are you asking from an air quality standpoint? No, we did not consider in the analysis the air motion, air emissions associated with a fire due to an up-center accident in light of the fact that the risk was so low as identified in the updated risk report, and the consequences were already identified as significant and unavoidable.
This might be a good stopping point. Any disagreement from the commission? Okay, so with that, I'm going to continue this meeting until tomorrow night at 6 o'clock. Excuse me, 6:30. 6:30. This. I'm going to reopen this public hearing. It's on the Valero Crude by Rail project, environmental impact report, and use permit. Last night, we, we were in the middle of comments by the commission, and we'll start where we left off last night.
I'd like to start by responding to a notice that came out from Valero today that said, thanks for taking the time to show your support, and we hope you can come back to speak. Unfortunately, no public comment was allowed during the first evening of the hearings. Project opponents have attempted to drag out the hearing process and discourage participation. I don't think that's really fair. I think I said last night that I was only speaking at length because this was my only time that I was going to be allowed to speak on this issue, and that I was happy to hold off until after the public comment. And again, I will say that, but we have an agenda that has been adopted, and that calls for all the commission to make their public comments first. I will not go nearly as long tonight as I did last night. I'm sure people will be happy to hear that. But I do want to get to a couple of issues that I didn't get to last night. Valero has been advertising fairly heavily about the economic benefits of the project. And when they first started advertising in Benicia Magazine, excuse me, they promised millions of dollars in additional tax revenue. In July, that advertising was changed to say the city is losing $36,000 a month due to delays in approving the project, and that would be enough to pay for four police officers. According to the city budget, the actual cost of a police officer, including benefits and overhead, is closer to $160,000 a year. So it's more accurate to say that the extra taxes would pay for two, not four, police officers. Not insignificant, but, you know, we'd like to see more police officers, but it's important that we are accurate in what we're talking about here. The source of the new tax revenue, I'm guessing, because it's not really spelled out, and perhaps when Valero speaks tonight, they can speak to this question, is, I'm guessing it's increased property tax. Now, many people have rightly complimented and thanked Valero for their charitable contributions, and they have made generous contributions to the community. The staff report says the project will increase the assessed value of the refinery by $55 million, which is the cost of the project. Now, the city gets about a third of the property tax payments. The rest goes to the schools and other, the county and other taxing districts. According to the Fairfield Daily Republic, Valero has challenged $1.6 billion of their assessments since 2012. According to the county assessor's office, in 2004, Valero had their assessment reduced from 864 million to 674 million on an appeal. And they were successful, but that appeal cost the city about $600,000 a year. In 2005, after the Valero Improvement Project was completed, the assessed value went back up to $963 million, but it was reduced on another appeal to $848 million. And that appeal cost the city about $300,000 a year. Now, the current assessment is $900 million. But Valero is appealing that, saying that the refinery, refinery is only worth $100 So if Valero is successful again in reducing their tax bill from $9 million to $1 million, the city would lose nearly $3 million on an annual basis. Now, it's common practice and understandable for businesses to try to save on taxes however they can and wherever they can. And Valero has done that by appealing successfully their property tax assessments every year since 2012. But every time they successfully challenge their assessment, it costs the city significant levels of taxes, and it outweighs the level of their charitable giving in Benicia. So we need to look at these promises of tax benefits with more than a little skepticism, unless Valero is willing to guarantee that they will no longer take any action that will further damage the city's tax base. And perhaps they will speak to that when, when they make their presentation. In the staff report, on the section on economic impacts, references made to a, to a report commissioned by Valero from the Andrew Chang Company. And on page 35 of the staff report, which talks about the basis for approving a statement of overriding consideration, and that's what you need to have to approve an EIR when a project's significant and unavoidable impacts cannot or will not be mitigated. That staff, that statement, I'm sorry, the report from the Chang Company estimates the project will generate $2 million in one-time sales taxes to the city based on the sales of construction materials. That's on page 35 of the staff report. So I'm, I need to understand how that $2 million figure was arrived at. This is my understanding of how sales tax works. The sales tax were, sales tax rate in Solano County is 7.625%. According to the city webpage, the city receives about 1% of that 7.6%. Now, sales tax is collected on the sales of materials or products made in Benicia or sold by Benicia companies. Valero has estimated that the cost of the project, including labor, materials, and engineering, is $55 million. But to generate $2 million in sales tax, there would have to be sales in Benicia of construction materials of $200 million. And I, I don't know if Mr. Chang is here or somebody from the city can correct me if my analysis is not correct, but that's how I understand it. So I think that number is greatly inflated and should not be relied on for something as important as a statement of overriding considerations. On the issue of jobs, that same report says that there will be up to 20 permanent new jobs at the refinery as a result of this project. But through a multiplier effect, the economic analysis turns that 20 jobs into 1,000 jobs in the Bay Area. So if somebody can explain to me how that happens, how you move from 20 jobs to 1,000 jobs, I would be happy to hear that. But again, this is, these are some of the basis on which they are asking us to make these findings. And for me, at least, I don't think the math adds up, but I'm happy to be corrected. Finally, the, the new jobs at Valero, would they be offset by jobs that would be lost at the port? Or by crews on the tugboats that accompany the tankers into the port? How many would, jobs would be lost as a result of fewer tankers unloading? And was that factored in? Is, is that 20 jobs a net number or a gross number? And finally, since crude can now be exported, much of the crude brought in could be exported and not refined, or refined and exported. So hopefully, Valero will answer the question of whether or not they intend to export any crude oil. Because if they do, now where they'd have to be exporting it through tankers, tankers then would be generating their own emissions, and all the presumed benefits of switching from rail to, I'm sorry, from tanker to rail would be lost. Finally, on the economic, on the general economic development front, I think we, as a commission, need to look at whether this project would harm the development of the industrial park, or would it help the development of the industrial park? Extra traffic tie-ups caused by trains would conceivably put a constraint on the attractiveness of the park to new businesses. The city's spending a good deal of money on a new bus hub right at the corner of Park and Bay Shore, which would be sort of the, the nexus, the central location that would be affected by the crude by rail project from a traffic perspective. So given the public safety risks and the health impacts of the project, I think we have to ask whether the image of the city in the industrial park would be helped or hurt by this project.
Location tomorrow night. Look forward to seeing you all again. Thank you.